Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you hear me? Please hang a week.
Yeah.
Are we good to go? Okay. All right. Hereby call to order the King George County School Board's special meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance to the sides of the United States of America. In future republic, we'll court to stand one nation and one God. Make results of liberty and justice for all.
All right. Please be seated. All right. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Please state your name, address, and in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak, we ask that you limit your comment to three minutes. Greta Crook. Is that correct?
Please.
Crook.
What's your name, ma'am? What's your name, ma'am?
She's there.
Greta Crook. Can you hear me? Greta Crook. Should I hold it? My address is 1504 Woodstock Road, King George. My husband and I have been a resident of King George for 22 years. Together, we have homeschooled three children very successfully here in King George. One is now an engineer, another a minister of the gospel, and our daughter is a teacher in the King George Elementary School system. I'm a born-again Christian, and Christ in me, the hope of glory, gives me the boldness to stand here before you this evening. I'm also a registered nurse. I'm here today for one purpose, and that is to speak against the school board's decision to withdraw the waiver of opting out of masks for both teachers and students. Last week, with one day's notice, this policy changed for both teachers and students. I have read numerous articles on the ineffectiveness of masks, many of which are removed from public access because they present an opposing view. I will be sharing some of these views in the few moments I have. Dr. Martin Kulldorff at Harvard is one of the world's leaders in epidemiology. He states the SARS-CoV-2 Wuhan virus has been the biggest health fiasco in history. We did not implement basic public health measures to do what is necessary for the people. The collateral damage done from the lockdowns is more severe than the actual virus. Children didn't go to school, and they have minuscule risk from getting this. They can get it, but the normal influenza infected more children than the virus. There has been 350 deaths from the virus, but we do not know if it was truly COVID. Annual influenza kills 200 to 1,000 children every year. In Sweden, they had no lockdowns, no masks, no social distancing, and no deaths in children. It's stunning, he says, that the basic principles of public health have not been used. Public health has all health problems. You do not just focus on one. One example, he says, is focused protection for the most vulnerable rather than lockdowns. The second article is from a physician's assistant who addressed the Edinburgh, Indiana School District. He states, putting masks on children psychologically affects them, and you are going to implore more infections on them. There are literally studies that he can prove that on the CDC website, it shows that handwashing and masks do not prevent you from getting infections. Germs create immunity in the body. There is nothing stronger than our own immune system. The dirtiest part of the body is the mouth. Studies have shown that bacteria are found on the mask that the children have used all day. Why would you have them breathe into this all day? That is wrong. The last article is from Dr. Dan Stark when he spoke to the Mount Vernon Community School Board. He states the following, "The natural history of all respiratory viruses..."
Thank you, Ms. Crook. Your three minutes are up.
Are you interrupting me?
I said your three minutes are up. Thank you.
I can hear you.
Your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Can I please finish the last?
I'm sorry. We leave it limited to three minutes and an opportunity to be equitable to all.
You will not allow me to finish five more?
No, ma'am. No, I'm sorry. It's three minutes afforded to all. Thank you.
That is rude.
It's our policy.
I am the only comment.
You are not the only comment. Thank you. Next, we have Ms... Next, we have Martha Norton. Do we have Martha Norton?
Good evening. My name's Martha Norton. I live at 4599 Sequoia Lane. I have a child in the high school, and the child that graduated from the high school is currently at Mary Washington. So I wanted to talk to you all, of course, of the mask mandates. That's what everybody wants to speak about, and I'd like for you to consider something. I imagine what you guys are feeling is that you don't have a lot of choice. The government told you to do it, and so you have to do it. So I'd ask for you to consider this, that by mandating masks, you have opened yourself up to extraordinary liability, extraordinary liability because of the detrimental consequences associated with masking. Ms. Crook was just trying to get into many of those and did get into some of them, but I'll tell you that the State Board of Health and the governor himself don't want you looking at the deleterious consequences. They want you to be a one-trick pony and focus solely on COVID and preventing COVID. They don't want you to think about what happens when you mandate masks. Let me tell you what you're opening yourself up to, and there is a ton of science out there about how terrible it is to mask children and the consequences that are associated with it. Elevated carbon dioxide level values after only 30 minutes of wearing the mask, lower oxygen availability even while at rest, increase in blood CO2 and significant drop in blood oxygenation saturation is accompanied by an increased heart rate and increased respiratory rate, a corresponding increase in exhaustion accompanied by a sensation of heat and itching after only 90 minutes of physical activity. Additionally, math-related breathing resistance is important. Listen to this. Experiments show an increase in airway resistance by 126% on inhalation and 122% on exhalation. When you add a moisture barrier on the mask, it increases it up to 2.3 times the normal value. That's what you're doing to our children. That's what you are going to be held responsible for. That's who's going to sue you all. It's going to be us because of the deleterious consequences of you all masking our children. There are obvious dermatological effects that you don't have to be a genius to figure out, increased acne, itching, facial problems. I believe one of the school board members even alluded that her son had that very problem associated with masks. And if you think we're going to let you sit around and not take the consequence for it, you're totally wrong. We will absolutely make you take the consequences for those actions. Migraines, disruption of nonverbal communication due to the lack of loss of seeing someone's facial expression, increases feelings of anxiety, discouragement, numbness, isolation, loneliness, suicide. All of those things are falling into your lap because the governor and the State Board of Health wants you to be a one-trick pony. You're supposed to think about one thing. You know who I bet would want you to think about the rest? Your insurance companies.
Thank you, Ms. Norton. Mr. Vance, do we have any comment online? No? Okay. Thank you. All right. At this time, we will move on to our discussion in this evening, which is our current school board vacancy. All right. Dr. Rensen, did you want to open with anything, or shall we continue our conversation?
Thank you, ma'am. Chair members of the board, I've provided a hard copy of what was provided to you electronically. Ms. Bushrod, the deputy clerk, was nice enough to simply go back to the last time there was a vacancy on the school board and pull up the procedures just as a starting place for your conversation and, I assume, decision tonight about how to fill the vacancy. So you have a hard copy of that. I'm happy to answer any questions. I think it outlines your timeline, the most pressing being the writ filed within 15 days, and you had to draft writ forwarded to you. So if we could get approval for that draft to be filed on your behalf, and then also you have a copy again of vacancy checklist as this conversation started for you. But it's, you have 45 days as a board. The methodology is completely up to you. This was just provided as a courtesy in case it was helpful.
Okay. Thank you. So would we like to begin the conversation regarding the, I suppose, the filing of the writ if we are in agreement that which was drafted for us was appropriate?
So we were in agreement that it was to be drafted, right? It was a board decision that we reached counsel to draft that. Is that correct?
Correct.
Collaborative board decision to consult counsel, correct?
You directed me to consult counsel and get the writ drafted.
And that was a board-directed?
From our last meeting.
Asked you to consult, correct?
Correct.
Dr. Benson, correct? The board?
Best I recollect.
Yes. Okay.
All right. Are there any objections to the writ as drafted and provided to us? Are there any objections to filing it in the state that it is currently in, as is? No? Okay. So the, so 15 days is August 30th. So today is the 16th. Today should be day seven.
Seven days. Seven days.
Mm-hmm.
File this week. It was morning.
All right. Are there any objections to that, having the writ filed tomorrow?
Need a motion to that?
I suppose it would be prudent.
I believe that we proceed with requesting the filing of the petition, the writ.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chairman, it's a motion carries. So that being said, would we like to discuss the vacancy checklist that was provided to us by Ms. Bushrod and discuss any proposed changes or process as we see fit? I know one comment that we had the board didn't pick up was the applications accepted until the close of business on Friday, August 13th. Obviously, there's a change that would need to be made.
I think they should probably be in by the 27th. How long would it take you to file it? Notice in the paper.
I don't know the... If she wanted that, I'd have to check with Bushrod, and she usually files it. So we'll have those printed for you. Find out first thing in the morning for you.
So as far as our overall timeline is concerned, so the 15 days was August 30th. So 45 calendar days from August 9th is September 23rd. So if we wanted to back up from that, I was thinking about it yesterday. If we had applications submitted by the 27th, which I think Mr. Collins, you had just mentioned, we could, if we wanted to proceed with interviews, as I guess has been done in the past, we could do those on September 6th, which would need to be an additional special meeting or work session, or we could do it on September 13th, which is our regular scheduled meeting. Any feedback?
So if you have... Will we give them enough time to get the notice in the paper? And for folks to be able to respond to that?
Mm-hmm.
So that's next Friday.
Next Friday is the 27th. So assuming the ad could be put in the paper this week sometime, I suppose, that would give folks about a week, give or think.
Probably seven business days.
Said again, seven business days after the notice. Okay. Versus just a week? It would. It would depend on when we can... You mean seven days from when it is run?
Mr. Collins, could you move the mic up? I can hardly hear you. I cannot hardly hear you.
I was saying, seven business days from after the time of the notice is in the paper. So if that was filed tomorrow, if it was put in the paper tomorrow, which are your deadline tonight, probably I think for tomorrow. So?
Two or three days.
Two or three days.
Yes, sir.
And then you add seven days on that.
So if we went with August 27th, which is next Friday, that would be a clean day, and that would be at least seven... It would be at least seven days. It would be seven business days, but what seems to me that a week would suffice. Anyone else? Means five business days versus seven business days, but it's a week.
Do we have a form that they're going to have to fill out?
What was that again? A form?
Is there a form that they're going to have to fill out?
Well, so if we wanted to use the checklist as it was done in the past, it says that there was basically the notice put out to say that anyone who's interested, please submit a letter of intent with a resume to the superintendent's office. So it's not really a form, but a instruction to submit your information by...
Could we put a...
Whatever time it says.
Also, submit a letter of resume or an email with the resume attachment?
Like you mean, instead of saying, please submit a letter, say, please submit an email? So it comes in being...
So you can either mail it in, or you can email it in.
As long as it's received. Mm-hmm. Yep. I think that works.
So what's that? What would that email address be?
That's Bushrod. Publicize that.
I think we should have some type of formal application form or something that they fill out so that everybody can give us their name and address, just because sometimes you just do a letter. People will not always give us that information, just the basic information that we'll need so that we can give that to Ms. Gump so she can verify that they are registered voters within the James Madison district.
What if, um...
After you get the, after you get the resumes or information, and then Dr. Benson sends it to Lori Gump to certify that they're registered voters in that district, I don't think we need to make this too cumbersome for people to do it, like, you know, fill out an application.
It's just your name, address, email, pertinent information that we would need to get in touch with them. A lot of times in the letter intent, we just get a letter, and we don't get all that information. I just want to make sure that it's known that that is pertinent information that needs to be on.
So how about if we, so what if we said, please submit a letter of intent, letter or email of intent with a resume to Espa Shada, such and such, to include the following, like be sure to include the following information, which could be the pertinent info, so it could be name, address, phone number, email. What else do we need? That seems pretty, that seems it, right? Would that work, Ms. Benson?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So then the next piece on this checklist is the applications will be accepted until the close of business. Would we like to change that to 4:00 PM Friday, August 23rd? Sorry, Friday, yeah, August 27th. Does that work? Okay. Dr. Benson, is this number still correct? Please contact the superintendent's office at 775-5833, sent you 8606. Okay, during regular business hours?
Yeah.
Okay. And then copy of applications, resumes sent to each school board member as they're received. Okay. And then after that point in time, Dr. Benson sends a letter to Ms. Gump to verify that they're registered voters in the said district. And then as the appointment will finish.
So number five?
Mm-hmm. Yep. I was just reading, looking through that one.
I don't have any problem with the folks that are applying to do a 10-minute thing, but I don't think it should be a question and answer from the public or even us.
Yeah. Unless we had a set answer. Yeah, I would agree with that. I think the 10 minutes is, is, would be a prudent way to handle it.
Well, and any questions and answers that we have, we will conduct in the closed interview.
Well, I guess that's what, are you getting at not doing a closed interview, just doing the 10 minutes?
I don't, I don't know why we... Unless there's something specific you want to ask them that you wouldn't ask, that they wouldn't say in public. You know what I'm saying? You want to make sure that everybody knows what's transparent.
Well, I think these are two different pieces of the process. The number five discussion is about being comfortable presenting to the public and to the school board. And then the second piece is more of, more of a true interview, and I would think that we would certainly want to do a regular interview in closed session to give them the opportunity to ask us questions that they might not want to discuss publicly.
So I don't have any problem with the 10 minutes thing, but... I do have a little cautionary for the interview with, without... I don't think it should be so private, like, you know what I mean? Like, what questions would we ask someone that we would need to know other than what they give us? All we want to need to know is if they're, what, what they're... They'll put it in their information if they want us to know it, right?
So if we did the 10-minute to 10-minute public session for them to present to us, present themselves and introduce themselves to us for 10 minutes, would we envision us being able to, like, a dialogue with them at that point in time to ask, for us to ask any questions that we have regarding what they presented?
I wouldn't have a dialogue in public, asking questions to somebody. Number one, they probably may not have the preparation, you know, the information. So that wouldn't be so good to ask questions. I would just like to have them present whatever they want in that 10 minutes that they want to tell us about.
And then, okay, and then just make the decision based on that? Okay. Ms. Benson, what do you think?
No, I just think that if, I'm not really opposed to the interview questions, but I think that we should have a set interview questions and ask each candidate those interview questions and not deviate from those so that it is, you know, equitable throughout all of the applicants. So we don't have a one-on-one, and we can just keep pressing them for more information or, you know, getting off topic or something of that nature.
Would you want to allow them to ask us questions?
Yeah, they could ask us questions specifically to, you know, what the position is, but...
Mm-hmm.
Well, I don't think that that's, I don't think that our role is to have them ask us questions. I hope that they want to be on the school board, they have researched it, know what they're getting themselves into. I don't think that we need to be asked questions. If you want to interview them, you know, I, you know, but if you do interview them, you might want to ask, like normal interviews, five questions.
Right.
Why you want to, why you be want to be on the school board?
It sounds...
How you handle difficult situations, you have that.
Correct. So, yeah, and I think some of the questions they could ask is, you know, that most people don't know, like, how much extra time is involved? Do you spend, you know, on the school board? If they have a family, they want to make sure that they're not overextending, you know, the responsibilities and just simple things like that. I don't think anything specific.
I understand, Ms. Benson, but I'm just saying, so how much time do you spend? So if you're really engaged, you could spend a lot of time. If you're not engaged, you can spend hardly any time.
So I tend to agree that the, I tend to agree with Mr. Collins that it'd be appropriate to ask, to have a formulated set of questions, like whatever, five, however many questions, but that I agree that if they are interested, one would hope that they would have done their homework leading up to that, and they're free to, you know, ask us questions, right? Reach out and learn, do some homework. Um, so I would be inclined to leave it as an interview for us to ask them questions, but for not the other way around.
So you want, you want to do five questions?
I don't know. We have to limit it. I mean, we can each come up with maybe a couple of questions and then get together and see which question we want to ask.
Mm-hmm.
My question would be, why you want to be on the school board? You often come up with four.
Okay. Well, why don't we, so let's see, if we do this by the 27th, so our meetings, let's see, first, okay, so before we get to that, so if we run, if we have people submit applications by the 27th, would we like to hold their interviews on the following regular meeting, which is September 13th, which would be 10 days before our 45 days are up? Or would we want to schedule another special meeting to have interviews with folks?
I would suggest a special meeting. Because some of the meetings, you know, some of the public comment can be long.
Right. Okay.
Folks should come in for them.
I agree. So September 6th, I just realized, is Memorial Day, so we could do 7th or 8th, something that week?
So wait a minute. When are they going to actually give their 10 minutes?
On this, I think that's the time that we're discussing.
So I would think that we should give them their 10 minutes and then give the public a chance to comment on that afterwards?
Okay. So, so we have a meeting, so our regular meetings are September 13th, September 27th. We have to figure, our 45 days are up by September 23rd. So we could make our decision, we could seek public feedback and make a decision on September 13th, and the week before that, we could hold the interviews. Thoughts?
So give me that, give me that schedule again.
Okay. So applications are submitted by the 27th. The following week, we would need to schedule a special meeting Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday ultimately, to have interviews with our candidates. And then the following Monday on the 13th, we could allow for public comment on whatever candidates have or whatever people want to say, and then we could make a decision that evening on the 13th. Or we could file, we could schedule another special meeting on the 20th, which would be a Monday, which would be before our 45 calendar days are up.
So if you, if you have the public come and speak, you'll, you'll bring, that'll be almost like campaigning, people come out with their person and give public comment. You know what I mean? Is that what we want? We want the campaign type thing?
I don't know. I thought someone...
I think that we should have the public's input. So I think if they give their 10 minutes, let's say...
Can't they do a written, a written comment? Like, we get a lot of written comments.
And then we'll have to post those? I mean, I think that it's important that citizens of the James Madison district are able to read or listen to what they are, and then they're able to comment on that afterwards.
I'm not disagreeing with your point. I'm just concerned about how that could turn out to be. I'm going to bring 50... I'm going to bring fifty people to talk about me to run for something. I don't know if that's what we want. You know what I'm saying? That's all I'm concerned about.
Well, so I don't think we, we wouldn't necessarily have to advertise that, right? We don't have a requirement to have a public hearing or something on our, on our candidates, so. Um, I mean, I would still be inclined to say, if we did interviews the week of the, that September seventh, and then made a decision on the thirteenth, we would meet our, um, our forty-five day timeline.
Right now, the four of us will decide, unless we don't make the forty-five days, the judge will decide, and then the next November, the James Madison District will decide.
Correct. So what do we think? Does that work for everyone?
I think the process sounds good. Um, the, so the special meeting would be either on the seventh, eighth, ninth, or tenth. Preferably here at this location.
I, I, so it's just going to be interviews, right? So I don't think we need this whole building to do that.
No, that's, that shouldn't matter.
Okay, so that's not, that's not when you're, we're going to ask them to do their ten minutes, or is it?
I guess that would be when we, when you wanted them to do their ten minutes.
So the applications are due on the twenty-seventh, we have a meeting on the thirtieth, that, that's when they're going to do their ten minutes?
We don't ha- we don't, we have a meeting on the twenty-seventh, not the thirtieth. Oh, you mean August thirtieth?
Okay, yeah.
No, we don't have a meeting on.
We don't, because this is a special meeting, so we have a meeting next, next week. Sorry, I'm a week ahead, a bit behind.
Right. So on the week of, like, say, September seventh, we could have a special meeting, they could come, give their ten minutes, and then we could hold the interviews, and then we could decide on the following Monday meeting. That work?
Okay, so the twenty-seventh, the apps are due, the seventh.
The seventh.
They speak.
Yeah, it's a Tuesday.
We have public comment. And then we vote on the twentieth.
Well, do we want to, do we?
The thirteenth, we would.
Can we do it on the thirteenth?
Well, when are we going to do the interviews?
On the seventh. So applications are due the twenty-seventh, August twenty-seventh.
Okay.
The seventh, say, it's the seventh Tuesday, for example, we can have a special meeting for them to give their ten minutes and do interviews, and then our next meeting is on the thirteenth, and we could make our decision at that point in time.
Do you want to amend your agenda on the seventh to not include public comment, or do you want public comment?
Um. I mean, I think all we need is the ten minutes from the candidates. Do others have an opinion on public comment on the seventh? Yeah, I would be fine with that.
What if you can't? Somebody doesn't get, isn't able to, to make the meeting, and they want to go back and watch it afterwards? So you want them to speak and have public comment all in the same night?
You're saying eliminate the public comment on the seventh, just have them speak and we do the interviews.
And then we have the public comment on the thirteenth before we vote?
Correct.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Ms. Collins?
Yeah, so we're not, we're going to vote right after discussion?
Uh huh.
Are we voting in closed session?
I would assume so.
No, you would, you would be voting in open session.
So somebody would make a motion?
You'd be discussing in closed session.
So when we vote, we make a motion, somebody would make a motion to.
But I would think we would need that discussion, that internal discussion in closed session, then come out and make a vote.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, okay, okay. Okay, so does the seventh work for everyone, that Tuesday, to have that special meeting?
Yes, works for me.
Ms. Collins?
I hope so.
Okay, alright, so we'll hold interviews on the seventh, so then the, um, do we want to put that in the, in the announcement? That runs in the paper? That our applications will be accepted until close of business Friday the twenty-seventh, and that interviews will be conducted at a special meeting on Tuesday, September seventh?
That would serve the, the, uh, purpose of the public notice.
Any objections?
Yeah.
Okay.
You, you could also fix it, I'll have it go this on, on the left side, too.
Yeah, I would think. Alright, and we'll remove the public comment from that meeting on the seventh. Okay. Already.
So then the twenty-seventh is the deadline for the applications.
Correct.
The seventh, they will come and do their ten-minute speech, and we will have their interview in closed session. The thirteenth, we will have the public comment, and we will vote, correct?
No, no more than ten minutes, it don't have to, it doesn't have to be ten minutes.
Right, yeah.
What was that, Ms. Collins? I didn't hear you. What did you say?
No more than ten minutes.
No more than ten minutes, that's correct.
Okay. Already. Well, I think we figured that out, are we missing anything? Okay, Dr. Benson, any concerns, issues? Okay, alright, okay, so at that time, um, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So before you go into closed session, so there's a, there's an attorney here, um, that person will be in closed session, personal. So that person needs to be added into the closed session to consult.
The statement about person that candidates for employment, so that person, we invite, um, whoever it is to closed session.
Don't we usually have to have something in there about legal counsel? What was that? Don't we usually have to have something in there about legal counsel in the closed meeting we have in the past?
It's not for the purpose of litigation, just, we're looking at, uh, employment.
Right, employment assignments, for ex- employees of the school board, and we invite whoever the legal counsel is into this meeting.
And Stacy Keeney is here this evening to talk to you about employment.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Make a motion pursuant state code two point two dash three seven one one point eight point one, for the purpose of discussion, consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignments, recognition of employees of the school board, and we invite Dr. Robert Benson and, um, Counsel Stacy Keeney.
Second, call favor.
Chair of the side, we're now in closed session.
That King George County School Board returned to open session and certified pursuant to State Code 2.23711 point D, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter. In all ways such public business matters as were determined by the motion by which the closed session was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body.
Were you going to add Mrs. Tany? No.
We're just moving to open.
Yep, okay. Second, certify?
Certify.
Certify, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're now in open session. Do we have a motion to approve the action resulting from closed session?
I make a motion to approve personnel as presented.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries, we have a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn, second.
Second. All right, chair votes, or sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're now adjourned.